And then whenever he called it out, I'm like huh. But there's no way. They call him Dave.
I'll tell you what really took the scene is uh.
Like, you know, uh, what they did before on this job. It is thicker because of what they did last time. The second crew they had, basically, because this was the end crew they did. We also think. That's just one of the things that. Of course, you heard about that. That's another thing.
Your carryover would be two sixty-two, one fifty-three. Or you can leave it just as it is and spend that money doing something else.
Spend the sixty-nine.
You can spend sixty-nine, you can spend the forty thousand, one hundred and twenty-one. You have to spend that on road projects. And we have fifty-six thousand, nine oh six, forty budgeted for street projects. We just didn't identify which ones you wanted to do. So if you didn't use the sixty-nine, you'd have the ninety-six thousand, ninety-seven thousand dollars for street projects. If you added the sixty-nine, you're gonna have a hundred and sixty-six thousand.
Okay.
And, or anything in between that you might not want, you might wanna leave some of that money in the general fund.
But the general fund already has a cushion of one ninety-two.
Correct. But we, you know, last year we carried over, well, when I first got here, you were carrying over like four hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then you were using it every year to balance the budget against the general revenues. So for the three budgets I've done, we've just kinda picked away at a little, you know, a little bit every year. Our reserve, not our investments, those are all sitting there, but our cash reserve has just kinda been going down a little every year as we used it to fund the operations of the city that were, uh, the needs were exceeding our revenues. You wanna, you could have, there's an opportunity to pump it back up a little bit if you wanted
Well, I've always been for roads.
Good news.
It's like with John. Uh, I think we should take the one sixty-six, four fifteen, and let's fix some roads.
Streets and sidewalks. Long overdue.
Streets for sure. And, uh, because, you know, they haven't been repaired or fixed for many years, and all of a sudden, in the last few years, we've been pushing toward that of fixing these streets.
Well, we've done pine, and we've done road gear, and now we got quarters.
Westwood.
There's been some roads. I mean, we should do something.
Don't we have?
We need to work on roads every year.
Do we do any roads?
And so this month, this Saturday, my name is.
Part of the budget.
In the Saturday project, we had fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and six dollars.
What type of expenses?
Already there. So we could add fifty thousand, make it a hundred thousand, and then utilize that, and then put the rest.
However you wanna do it.
Add fifty thousand to it, we'd make it a hundred thousand towards roads, and then put the rest towards the cushion. I mean, you hate to keep picking away at something that...
I'll part the whole hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars towards streets.
So, no, I think we get it out of the way. We all want streets and sidewalks. Enough of that. We all do want that. Now, this is more philosophical question of our approach to the budget. Are we gonna be conservative and ensure that we keep some of that money that we can spend later in the year if we go through the winter and we don't have excessive costs associated with snow removal, or flooding costs that we have to deal with? Or do we just, you know, roll the dice and hope that...
I don't need it.
Everything's good. So I think that's, that's where, that's what the question is, is, it's not, do we want streets or roads? Yes, we all want streets or roads. The question is, what is our approach to the budget? How conservative are we gonna be in our approach to the budget? So that's really the discussion, is, uh, do we take a conservative approach and we hold that money a little closer to our chest? Or do we just, listen, we're gonna go for it and hope nothing bad happens and, and...
We got a hundred and ninety-two thousand.
But reminding that we just had it.
Setting there for emergencies or something.
All of our city employees just had to raise in their health insurance premiums. The city employ, I mean, I mean, there's, there's...
Oh, we should keep money back for that, or...
No, I'm just saying, I think that, I mean, street, like, Tom said, streets are, everybody wants streets, but I mean, we just pushed our staff into a, a larger payment for health insurance. I mean, and then, I, I think you should protect your home and your money first. I think maybe, maybe two streets with it, but not all of it.
Well, I'm trying to understand what you're trying to say, though, with additional costs on insurance.
Their premiums.
Has to do with streets, but...
But, but, but...
It's not about streets. It's about the money.
It's about the money.
They were unanticipated increases.
Yeah.
So we can give more raises, or help them?
You're totally missing, you're, you're missing. It's, it's not about giving raises to people. It's not about, um, more or less streets. It's that was an unanticipated cost in the budget, the increase in health insurance.
No, it wasn't. He sat there and told us it was gonna go up.
Oh, from the previous year?
Yeah.
So we had to make budget adjustments to make sure that fit. So do we take a conservative approach and be more prepared for things we don't foresee? We can still, we get closer to the end of the budget year next year, we can still use that money out of the general fund for street and sidewalk projects? Or we go ahead now and just, let's go and, let's, let's spend it? I, I'm, um, I'm not fearful that there's something big that we've missed, uh, but at the same, and I definitely, you know, want streets and sidewalks as bad as everybody else does. But are we gonna take a conservative approach and leave that in the general fund and then use it if we haven't had to use it for streets and projects later in the year? Or just go ahead right now?
And Martin just said, they've been chipping away at it, the cushion.
If we don't have the money right now, there is no way we're gonna start, it's very hard to start projects, because you gotta get out to get the engineering and figure out what the cost, what projects are gonna be done.
And understand that...
The less you take, the more you take away, the less you're gonna have to work on.
We, we, we don't have this money yet. I mean, it's gonna come in during the year, so we're only gonna be able to do projects as the revenue.
It's not like it's all there at once.
No, we don't have, this money's sitting in the bank yet.
Dave, would you like, Eric, you had something in this?
Do we actually know how much more that building's gonna cost us than what the insurance is?
That's what I'm just gonna bring up, the bombshell there.
It'd be nice to have some kind of cushion for that.
How much more is that gonna cost them?
Well, we don't. We'll know a week from Friday. On, on the major expense, everything else is pretty well accounted for. But, you know, we decided to, and got approval from Landmarks to change the exterior treatment, and, you know, they gave us fifteen thousand dollar allowance for replacing the windows, and it's, but it's gonna be, as Dave knows, you know, it's gonna be, we already have one quote, and I can't say what it is because people are still doing it, but, you know, we, we know it's gonna be more than fifteen thousand dollars.
Can we just wait on this decision till we find out what the street shed's gonna be? That would make the most sense to see what we're gonna do.
But the money's not even all there.
Now we have a better picture.
We know there's gonna be some money, we just don't know what.
Yeah, this is not urgent, because we're not gonna get any of this work done in the next three months anyway.
We have time.
No, we have time to talk about it.
All right, move on.
Yeah.
Excellent. So receive this and think about this. Uh, the third sheet, you will recall, are the projects that, that Dave submitted, uh, and the priority numbers, uh, and whatever level you decide, you know, be thinking in terms of those options, because these are the worst cases we have, uh, which we'd rather do. And there are no sidewalks included in this, so if there are places that we need to do sidewalks that you'd like to see included, let us know, we can add that to the list.
Mr. Chairman.
The, uh, Kiffin City, the microseal work is complete, and, uh, guys came to town, and Dave met with the foreman and said, uh, we'd like to get the repair work done before we do the road, because, uh, it's a press, we, we wanted to make sure that got done. Guy looked around and he said, you know, I'm just not comfortable just putting patches on this, this, this work. Uh, he said, uh, he said, we should, we should redo it. And we went, well, that's nice. Then we'll get a whole new product that will have another year and a half life in it, because... So they wanted to, to come back and redo what they did a year and a half ago, and no, no charge to the city. Uh, but they couldn't get it done that day, because it takes preparation time, and we had already had this, you know, which we're closing, and we'd announced it. So they went ahead and did the work for which they had contracted, Four Street, and did, because we were able to get everybody notified, this section of, uh, Third Street between Merchant and Market, which was not part of their contract, that's part of their commitment, kind of their good faith, uh, effort to show us what they will do, uh, in, in, in the rest of downtown. Uh, and, and this was all handled verbally, with Dave talking to the foreman, and the foreman talking to his supervisor, and everybody was on the same page. So the next day, I called the supervisor...
Steve Jeffs.
Steve Jeffs, who's the supervisor, and said, you know, I, it isn't enough, I mean, I know you're a well-intended guy, and you're a good company, and all that stuff, but I need something in writing. So he sent me a, a letter, kind of pledging to do that. Uh, since then, I consulted with Frank, and he said, well, I'd like to draft the agreement that they're, that they're giving to us in case they don't show up in March, I'll have something I can hang my head on. And, uh, and so, uh, he is here tonight to talk to you about that, and he would come up with an agreement that he thinks is enforceable, and they would sign off on it. Again, I, I can't imagine why they wouldn't, because they're, they've said they're committed to do it. Uh, Tom and I had a discussion, and he said, well, you know, agreements are great, but if the company goes away, what do you got? So I did a little research on Missouri Petroleum today, even though I know they've been around a while. They're eighty-three years old, they've got two locations, St. Louis and Cape. They, they are part of, uh, Landmark Construction Services, and so they have other business interests, um, and they've got over a hundred employees. Uh, and, and to my knowledge, they're one of two companies in Missouri, St. Louis area, that, that do this work. So I don't have any problems, based on my research, concluding that this is a company that will be there in spring. The, uh, they'll do it, in my conversations with Mr. Jeffs, and in the letter, he said, we'll do it during the day, we'll do it at night, we'll do it whenever you wanna do it. Said if you're gonna ask us to do it in the evening, we'll have to push it off, uh, until we know we're gonna have warm nights. Uh, but if you wanna do it during, can do it during the day, then we can get it done earlier, because we'll have the sunlight to have it set up. So I think the issue here is whether, uh, we proceed, whether, you know, Frank will draft up something, and then there's a condition of payment for this, I'll ask him to sign that, and then we'll be in a good place come spring to, to call him back and say, hey, let's get this, let's finish this work up.
It's, it's, uh, the patchwork we asked for, but they're gonna do the complete street.
They're not gonna patch it, they're gonna re, overcut it.
And if they do it the way they did this out here in Third Street, it'll, instead of one and a half, two years, it'll probably last three to five then.
You know, I, they, they, I'm not, they fulfilled their obligations under the contract last year. We just got caught with that precipitous drop in temperature, and it didn't set up, and it was just a bad deal all the way around. I don't think it's failure to perform on their part, we just had bad luck.
But they're the ones that did it.
They did it, and they're willing to come back and make it good, so...
It's no different that if I do an all change and don't do it right, I'm responsible for it, just like they're responsible, you know?
Agreed.
With the temperature.
And they're, they've accepted responsibility.
Yeah.
But wouldn't, again, wasn't that one of them last-minute decisions to do that? Wasn't that a last-minute decision to do that?
To do the work?
I mean, 'cause you guys didn't vote on it to what, that October.
Oh, it was late season.
Yeah, so...
At a late minute, we worked on it for weeks.
I'm not trying to take up on it, but it wasn't like they planned it from January to...
But Dave, that, that falls under the contract, because they know the limitations as a product. And if it's, if they can't do it, they have to say, right, I'm sorry, but it's too cold, we can't do it.
But we, we also had to, uh, kinda work around the downtown area at due form, you know, 'cause of just closing everything, 'cause I got ring real good over from the postmaster, 'cause, you know...
Well, and we got, you weren't the only one, we got, uh...
Yeah, we all got it too.
Well, at Postmaster and, uh...
When was it done before?
October last year.
But it was real cool that night.
We did the same thing this year.
It was cold, and the people got on it, and they were all...
We needed to do it earlier in the year, not late July.
That's what I'm saying, we, we did it in October, and it worked out, so we did it in October again.
And we're gonna make sure we're doing it at a time where the temperature's gonna be right to do it.
Then he gave you the rest of the work that you're supposed to done.
Yeah, 'cause I thought about this too, I was like, that's kinda cool.
Well, you know, we, I, I, I called Dave, and, and, or texted him that night, 'cause we, he said, oh, we're gonna do it, and you can open it at three-thirty, and they were gone, and Dave and I were standing there looking at it, and we're not opening it, it's not ready.
Yeah, it didn't open until about nine.
It was seven.
Seven, yeah.
And so at seven, I called Dave, and that's, we texted him and said, did it set? And he said, yeah, it's set, so we were able to pick barriers down.
What, what I was talking to Martin about, it's not so much that I wanna draft the letter, it's what I wanted, the written document to say is that they'll do the work, like they're talking about redoing it, I'd like it to say that they'll redo it according to the specs of that original contract. I don't know what those specs were, if it was even engineered. Uh, and so you're gonna need to get something that says, uh, and I don't know, is, is this a matter of depth, or...
It's material and thickness, application rates.
But it was specked out in that first contract?
Yeah, we, we had the specs for it.
Right. What I'm saying is, if they're volunteering to redo it, you don't want them to redo it half as well as the, as the first one, you want them to do at least as much as you had in the first one. So if you say, okay, that's acceptable, you're not, now, we wanna make sure that they're not gonna do patching if they've offered to redo it, but I would say, yes, and please confirm that you're gonna do it according to the specs of the original contract. That's all I'm really looking for, is that you have something to measure the redo against.
Can we put a, a date on this, as far as it needs to be done by a certain date?
You could, you could say, uh...
I would think if they're reputable, though, we don't need to be doing all this stuff.
But to back up, did we give them specifications on what we wanted, or did they tell us the specs of their...
We, we specked it.
Okay, all right.
I mean, that's what the whole issue was about, we discussed last time, was that they never came back to fix it.
Yeah. And Dave addressed that, I think, in terms of their, how that went down. Because they, they sent a guy down here who said, Dave said we've got some bad spots, they sent a guy down here, and he said, this is more than I can do with my mop and bucket. And so they went back, and they were in the process of sending down their equipment to do, I guess what they're talking about doing now.
Yeah, they've come back to patch it with the truck, but the truck broke down.
And so, and, and, and then by the time they got it repaired, the schedule's all got screwed up, and, and, and he apologizes for that. But he still said, we're still gonna come down there and do it.
So, so what you, what you started out with is, uh, the, the appropriate approach would be to, uh, when we receive the invoice for what they just did, be able to say to them, here's the document we would like for you to sign that verifies your promise to come back and do this, what has previously done wrong, do it right, and when you sign that, here's check.
Well, I didn't say that.
Well, that would be the way I would handle it.
That's the way, I like, I like that way.
We are governed by, there's a state law called the Missouri Prompt Payment Act, that says that you have to pay when it's complete within thirty days, or you're subject to significant interest payments and attorney's fees. Now, having said that, you don't have to pay for shoddy work, but if, you know, typically what we're looking for is an engineer that says it's substantially complete, here's the short punch list of what needs to be done, and your retaining just only supposed to be no more than ten percent, I'm sorry, no more than five, but up to ten if the, if the contractor agrees to do it. So what I'm talking about are two different things. You've got a project, if you believe it was done correctly, you're supposed to pay for it, okay? Now, you got another project that they've acknowledged needs warranty service, okay? Keep them separate. Uh, but, but beef up the warranty agreement, because it didn't get done, you thought it was gonna get done, you know, before this work was done, and they weren't able to perform that warranty work. So what I'm, I'm saying is, I don't know that you have a, a right to tie the two contracts together and use the one as a hammer for the other, and you can negotiate that way. But as a practical matter, what you wanna do is get them to agree, put it in writing in detail, and say, look, you, you told us you were gonna do the warranty work at the same time you're doing the new work, you weren't able to get it done, now you told us that you're gonna do this new work before, make up a date, July one, of next year, you're, you'll coordinate with the city, and you're gonna do it as a new, basically as a new install, meeting the same specs as the original contract. Get that beefed out, and then leave this contract basically alone as far as payment, unless, unless you don't think they did it correctly. If you think there's something wrong with this, then treat it separately.
I don't think that's a question, pardon me.
But you, you can't, what you can't do is, let me say it this way, you can't use common sense, because our, our wise state legislators passed this Prompt Payment Act, and not only would you have to pay them basically a one and a half percent a month in interest, but you gotta pay their attorney's fees. If we don't have good faith, based on this contract, the project that you just let and they perform, you don't have good faith reason not to pay, uh, you're gonna get snapped.
So, so we, we got that, that we can't hold their money out.
I got thirty minutes to work out.
Which I'm very in favor of.
Sitting at the same table and getting all signed.
Which I'm very in favor of, you can't treat vendors like that unless there is a problem.
Right.
But like you just said, clock's ticking, so whatever document we need to get worked up and to them to get them to sign, we need to make that happen quick.
I just was thinking in terms of a letter agreement, that it's signed by the and signed by you.
Yeah, that, that would be, but I was, I was, Martin, I, we only got to talk about it for about two minutes, but what, what I'm looking for is tie in the specs of the old contract, that they're gonna do a redo under the, the old specs. So they'll do it by a certain date, and that's, that's gonna be treated as, you know, warranty repair at no cost to the city.
So how then did the city govern at that time? Pay for the job, buy the job and pay the contractor when the specs weren't met?
They were met.
Then...
It just didn't stick. I mean, and a year later, a little less, and six months later, they applied, the material that was specified, at the rate that was specified, and according to the contract, we watched them, we measured it, it was done. But it didn't set up, and that was because that temperature dropped, and we couldn't keep the roads closed, and so we, it's, you know, we, we had to open it for traffic, it probably shouldn't have been.
It sounds like we'll be pretty fortunate if they come and fix it, and we should just...
Uh, didn't we tie some of that in with this last, this Fourth Street?
Well, at the last meeting...
We said, come down, do Fourth Street, and do the patchwork. They agreed to that?
Yeah. Well, no, they, they came down and looked at, at, the foreman that was on this job said, I'm not gonna try and patch that, I'm calling the company, we're gonna redo it.
Uh, Dave, how's Fourth Street?
I think it looks good.
Looks good. How's Third Street, between Market and Merchant?
It's really good. They put it on a little thicker this time, they actually put two lifts on it, and, uh, back to them doing, they wanted to come down a month ago, but since you guys decided to do this, they don't wanna come down for less than twenty-five thousand square yards, you know, and this was only like forty-five hundred square yards. So I told them, I said, well, if you're gonna come down, you might as well do it all one time, if they was gonna do the patching, and that's when I got decided, we can't do patching, 'cause it'd be, and you wouldn't want the patches, 'cause you, I mean, it's only a little over an eighth inch thick, but still, you'd have bumps all over, and it, it'd look stupid.
We're gonna get a better product.
Yeah.
Our, our, our only caution is to make sure we get it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, and that was the whole thing, at the last meeting, the board agreed that we would have them fix what, what they had done before.
We're not for the concerns that were expressed by this board at that time, and we wouldn't have this conversation. You said, we wanna make sure we get what they gave us fixed.
Right, we wanted that fixed, then do Fourth Street.
We, we approached it that way, but, you know, when he got here, he said, I don't think that's the solution for you guys.
Right, right.
It wasn't practical, did it?
Yeah, he was on our side.
My main concern is, as long as he comes back.
Well, and then I think...
What's our recourse if he doesn't?
Well, that's maybe the letter.
Let's go into warranty.
Well, if, I, I guess it's gonna be a question of who, who messed up, given the weather and the use of the road and the opening of the road. It could be, uh, finger pointing, but that's not where we're at. I don't think you wanna be talking recourse. I think what you wanna be talking is accept their warranty proposal in writing, and how, how they're gonna do it, and when they're gonna do it, and let's not be saber rattling when it looks like they're gonna do it and you're gonna end up with a better product.
I don't agree with you.
We'll talk, we'll talk, uh...
And then probably, we're gonna have more work farm with money coming up, we're probably gonna have more work, so, I don't know why we're beating this to death.
Because we still have fifteen minutes in the works.
But I'm just saying, we're gonna have more work probably this year farm, this coming year.
Is there a problem that could pop up here like it did over there, thirty days from now, sixty days from now?
Yes, I mean, it's possible, but I kinda doubt it, because it was clean, and, uh, like I say, they put it down pretty thick this time, so, and we, and we did let it cure longer than what they recommended, so...
You can really notice it down on Third Street, how thick that they put, I mean, that's the first thing, I suppose, that, did a nice job down there, so far. It's a chance you take with overlay or anything, it may not, but I'm sure it will.
Yeah, I mean, it is, yeah, I think it will, too. That's the last item that I have for your attention. Does anybody here wanna have a conversation about anything else? Donny, I did, uh, talked to Townsend, and nobody gave the card, guy was gonna call me back, and I never heard. I think my only option now is, those people are working for Citizens of that sort, is to get with Ron Klein and tell him about it, and see what we can get done.
Okay.
And if not, we'll just, we need to fix it.
Yeah, appreciate it.
The only thing, going back to the truck in the beginning, I did probably spend three hours on the internet last night, and the new one was by far the best deal.
Thank you.
And I got them printed out, so I wouldn't see them.
The delusion we came to, and if you agree with us, I don't, we need to discuss it.
Well, I spent a lot of time on the internet last night.
Thank you.
I finally got the last bid today on the spreaders, on the salt spreaders. So does that have to, the board have to vote on that, or is that your decision, or...
Well, it's, it's over five thousand dollars, so it's hard to put it on their agenda for their next meeting.
That's twelve thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Uh, I was talking to, well, nobody is a little bid, they've got a stainless steel one that they can get right away. The other one's gonna take at least forty-five, thirty to forty-five days to get it in. I mean, it, Jay, well, you guys can make a decision, you can't...
No, 'cause it's over five thousand dollars, we have to advertise it.
Yeah.
Was that budgeted?
Yes.
So we ain't gonna have this better this year then?
Why?
Well...
We can advertise it once.
By the time you have, what is it?
Next week, if it doesn't have, one ad's all that to run.
I'll, I'll go ahead, but the old one's on for this year.
We'll give it a week, and, and, and we don't get any other responses, we'll, we'll go.
We're gonna have one meeting in the hour.
I guess you all need to just tie it around.
Yeah, we need to look at that.
Um, the second meeting in, well, the second meeting in November is on Thanksgiving, and then the second meeting in December is December twenty-sixth.
What would be the meeting in November?
You mean, what day of the week?
Yeah.
What, what date?
It's November twenty...
Are we gonna cancel tonight's meeting due to baseball, or...
I know.
That's a good idea. We're just gonna hurry.
That's all, that's all they play, first two hours.
Well, let's get going, Tom.
Wait after the second end.
We can just send this meeting right now.
So, um...
There you go, cattle are up there.
Yeah, I got it right here. November.
Look at it right there.
Twenty-eighth.
What's our regular meeting?
It would be on Thanksgiving.
Twenty-eighth?
No, no. Seventeenth. Fourteenth.
I won't be...
Hilariously.
I'll be involved.
So, do you want one meeting in December being it's the day after Christmas or do
you wanna have that meeting the day after Christmas?
Let's just have one.
Just one in November, one in December and if you need a special meeting or something, we'll call it.
Everybody hear that?
We're gonna schedule one in each month and then if something comes up that requires your attention, we'll call a special meeting.
Second Thursday of November in December will be normal board meeting.
That works.
Yep. Special meeting needed will be called and advertised. Damn, say the break.
Take a break.
We'll be back here at seven sharp. It's a very pleasant evening, ladies and gentlemen. For your listening and dancing pleasure, the Italian Crowd Orchestra bringing you the big man sound from the swing era, tunes of the thirties, forties, and a few others. Thank you, Tom. I couldn't have done it that well. We'd like to make this a medley of two. We'd like to call on the band to come up and do a wonderful thing. It's usually done with a big symphony orchestra. We'd like to do it with a nine-piece band, Ruffini. The mayor is out of town on personal business. That's why I'm up here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the father of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and in the liberal liberty of justice for
Mayor Draper, Alderman Couch.
Here.
All the women's are with.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Danny Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Hilton Booths.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
All the women in the room, Phil. We have a form.
Approval of the revised...
Moved approved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn to the general. Personal appearances? Personal appearance? All right, Martin, you give his report.
I wanted to do that report and I mean, we do it quickly and I would encourage other department heads who have reports to get here tonight to be brief because there is something distracting us, our attention. Porter Street is open. They completed the tarring and they opened it today and I've driven it a couple of times and got down to walk around and it's a good job done to specifications and I think it's gonna serve the city well for a long time. We're taking bids on the structural remodeling of the street department shed, as I pointed out, they're doing November first. We have this contract that the city attorney reviewed for the Hyten Viking Trail, the Harwood, and it was proposed by, the company was selected for the work and I sent it off to MoDOT and they sent back a rather detailed exceptions that things they want changed and they want amended and I sent that back to the engineer and that's being done. So, I thought we would have our contract for you tonight. We won't, so we'll have to deal with it at your next, at your next meeting. We already talked about the railroad and we talked about the other things that are on the agenda that are worthy of comment at work sessions, so that's a big part of it.
Question? Staff reports. Field operations supervisor, Dave Gankley, please. Thank Sandra on your way by for giving up her spot.
I already did. Of course, it shouldn't take long. Thank you, honey. We've been spending quite a bit of time moving stuff around in the shop for the contractors. Seemed like every time we move it, they gotta move over here, move over there and, but electric was almost done and the painting's done. Doors are up.
What's left to do with the electric? I thought they finished.
They're still doing a little bit of minor stuff in there and they was there a little bit today. They're basically just touching up and, but they are, he is gonna get you a bid on that other, other part, so. We started working on the best ditch or lucent ditch today, so we only had a couple of little problems. We had a sewer line and an old abandoned line that was there, so, but other than that, it should be okay. Did you get ahold of you today, John, about hauling the riprap?
Was that what that birch thing was coming from, that's on there?
Yeah.
There off the market?
Yeah, they decided they wanted it. I was gonna use it up in the pool, but it hurt, so.
Yeah, well, I've been there.
Yeah.
I guess, when do you close up, like, the rest of the apartment?
Well, it's usually about the middle of November. We try to keep it as long as possible, but...
We left it in December last year because of the weather.
Yeah, because the weather was nice, yeah, but I don't think this year's gonna cooperate. So, we just kinda, kinda, around November, we watch the weather and go from there. Then soon as we do, it's a nice warm day the next day or whatever, so.
Dave, has anything been done there that problem there by give or gets?
That's on our list for, actually, it was on this week, but it didn't work out because we wanted to get that done, so next week, we're gonna get over there. I kinda put that off because I was running out of money in last year's budget, so I was waiting to get, get some new money.
Appreciate it, thank you.
The old money was gone, so I need new stuff.
Dave, do you have any idea, like, with the contractor, the gas lines, when is this gonna be done so you guys can have some heat before it gets too cold?
Shu's kinda waiting on, on the electric to get, you know, electric people getting to get out of the way and then he's gonna come in there with a lift because all them pipes that are, that were burnt has to be replaced, so. I called him yesterday and they got swamped because it is cold weather, everybody's furnace is not working, so we got put on the back burner a little bit, but...
Well, how long will it take once he starts working to replace the pipe?
I wouldn't think it'd take more than a couple of days, so. But then again, we can't really turn the heat on until we get it all boarded up because then, you know, but, you know, we can get that in the office part, get that going, it's where we got some heat to go into, so.
Well, I see the concern with the diesel quite a lot, but you don't want it to get too hot to start.
Definitely. Yeah. If it gets too cold, they're gonna be hard to start.
You got the onions for them?
No, none of them have them on there. Well, I mean, we've never needed them before because, you know, we've always had heat for them.
Got any other heaters, like the Salamanders?
I just went and got one because the other one got ruined in the fire. I guess the fire department, whenever they sprayed water on it, wouldn't work, so. But we got something to just take the chill out if we're working in there, so. But we actually haven't been working in there. We did a little bit yesterday on, worked on some lights, but because of the fact that the contractors are in there and...
You know, one of those running all night, it's getting really, really cold, you wonder, the wonder is even if it's not insulated.
Yeah, but I don't know if I'd trust one of them running all night in.
You might have another fire.
Yeah, so.
We're a few days away from...
Them diesels still start, you have to get super, super cold.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not talking about day tomorrow, I'm talking about, you know, when it gets into November, December, if, you know. Thank you. Go have a good evening.
Our tourism director, Sandra Cowan.
Now, I had about a forty-five minute speech prepared, but I've cut it down.
Please keep...
Thank you for having me. Any... I'm gonna save some time by passing a couple of things around. If you'd like one of these, if you don't already have one, Rural Heritage Day Festival is coming up on Saturday, so take one of those if you want it and pass it around. I'm also gonna pass one each of these, I'd like to get these back. These are from the Southeast Missourian. These are from the Southeast Missourian. It's a publication called The Bridge and we recently got quite a bit of free publicity, so as opposed to the paid advertising that we do, we also from time to time get free publicity, so I'd mark it as marketing. All of those are marks about St. Genevieve, so.
Okay. So, this weekend is a very busy weekend. It's been busy leading up to it as well. Friday night, we had the art walk. Saturday, Rural Heritage Day activities, all day, and then the spirit reunion in the evening. There are also events going on throughout the area. Crown has an event primarily for children on Saturday called Roar Fest. We will also be hosting a group called the Missouri Community Scholars for a workshop about Missouri folk arts on November 7th through the 9th at the Welcome Center. So, I wanted you all to know about that in case that you hear about these groups that are coming to the Welcome Center. We've had bus tours and group tours and student tours. We've had bus tours and group tours and student tours and we'll talk about the numbers in just a minute. I'm also making arrangements to sponsor a social media workshop for small businesses. We're looking at either November 20th or the 21st. This will be for primarily the seats. We'd like to get filled with the owners of restaurants, shops, bed and breakfasts if we have any seats open. Other people are welcome to attend as well who are interested in learning about social media. They may have a social media account like Facebook for their own personal use but they may not realize the opportunities to use that as a marketing tool and that's what we're really going to focus on. I'm going to host it up at St. Jen High School in one of their computer labs so people will be able to not just hear about it but actually try out their new skills that evening and so we'll be working towards that. That's something that has been on the wish list for a while and a lot of people have really expressed an interest in that. So you have a packet of numbers in front of you. These are half size what they usually are. I'm trying to save space and time. You can see the first chart at the bottom of your hand out there. Welcome Center visitors, individual visitors. That shows you the entire year. Just to be very brief, September numbers were up about 18% over September of 2012 and year to date were up about 10% overall. The next page, group visitors. Again in the month of September, that fourth bar chart or that bar graph to the right there, we were up about 30% over September of last year. And quite a bit of that in terms of group visitors has been the efforts that we made to reach out to all of the schools in our surrounding counties. And so we've seen a lot more school groups. We've also had quite a few bank tour groups come in. We had just another bank tour group in town today from Jefferson City. So these are like their loyalty groups for banks. And the passport sales, you can see at the bottom, we kind of split this out into adults and students. Obviously the adults are much higher than the typical student passports. And for the month of September, we continue to have a strong month on the adults and not so strong on the students. So you may ask, how can we have that when we have more students coming to town? And that's because with budget cuts they can't afford to go to all the houses. So sometimes they see one house or two houses or a house in the museums and so they're paid individually instead of going for the group passport. And then the next page is just showing you where that data comes from. And then finally there's a sheet that should look like this in your packet. And this is if you've ever considered getting a personalized license plate for any reason, it doesn't have to do with tourism. It could be your initials or your dog's name or anything. I would encourage you if you thought about doing that that this would be a good time to do it and you can use the tourism license plate program to do that. It's a two-step process. Basically you fill out some paperwork to say, "I would like to get a custom plate and I would like $25 to go to Missouri's tourism effort." And then you send that in and they send you back a little thing that you take to the license office and you pay your regular fee for your plate renewal. So it is a two-step process. It costs a little more but if you were thinking about getting a customized license plate, we'd appreciate your support for tourism. So with that, I will kind of wrap it up and ask if anyone has any questions. I'd be happy to answer those.
Your tractor parade through town starts at St. Mary's Road. Where is that going through?
There's a, on the back of the page of the schedule of events, there's a map there for where the parade route is going to go. So depending on, let me see if somebody's got one that has the, here, you've got it. That one's got the map on the back. Oh, you've got it right there. That dotted line is your map of where the tractor parade is going. So there will be tractors pulling wagons and horses, draft horses pulling wagons in the streets this weekend. And we are participating fully at the Welcome Center. For the first time, we're actually going to have a hands-on demonstration. We're having paper filigree or quilting that will be demonstrated and we're also showing old time movies. And I've gone to this festival for four years in a row and I never knew that it went from 1850s up to the 1950s or 60s. So I said, "How can we show old movies?" Well, because it falls within that period because the tractors all come from that period too. So we'll be showing old like, old black and white movies. Some of them are even silent movies in the missile horn gallery at the Welcome Center. So come down and see us on Saturday please. Watch for the signs that will be all over town that will indicate where there are activities going on because they're not just on St. Mary's Road, they're also mixed in among the shops in the downtown area. Okay. Thank you.
Fire chief Mick Schwent has a report in here. Chief Bennett?
Good evening. How are you guys? I think that I can beat both of them. Any questions?
Hey, I'm sorry, I got a...
Yeah, I read Mick Schwent's letter to us. He agreed to come in on a, not every month, but he agreed to that and that's his agreement and now I don't understand why he's not keeping to his agreement. That's...
At the top of that is a cell phone number.
I was talking to Martin Toma.
Hello.
Thank you.
Is cell phone number still up there? All right, sorry chief.
Oh, that's all right. That's all right. I'd like to take the opportunity to introduce our new officer. His name is Beau Strebek. He lives in Deluge, has a little over 14 years in University City, has moved back down to this area and I think he'll be a great asset. So if you guys have any questions for him, I know he'd be happy to answer them. I'm assuming he'll be happy to answer them.
Is he living here in the city?
I doubt it.
As of right now, no. My wife and I have talked about it though.
How's it work with an officer that already has experience? You have a certain timeframe for acclamation to the community?
As far as our FTO program? The field training? Yeah. Every new hire goes through a field training period. Officers that have experience that you don't have to show them every aspect of the job. It makes it a lot faster process. He'll be acclimated with our policies and procedures, obviously the road test and the computer programs and the major landmarks. But as far as the day-to-day operations, you know, it's handy to have somebody that has been there and done that so.
I want to personally thank you and your officers. You do a great job for our Monster Dash every year.
Thank you.
We meet here out there again Saturday morning, 8:00 AM and...
We will be there.
We appreciate your help.
You're welcome.
One thing I would like to ask, and I wish I'd have thought about it before, but anytime Fourth Street's closed, we probably need you guys up at the end of Market 161.
Okay.
They had that traffic jam that was down fast, real fast.
Okay.
That was school.
Lucent. Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, we'll try to remember that in the future.
I found out about it next day of course.
Yeah.
Hey.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Eric, is there any ordinance on these roadblocks? Or should I be asking?
The roadblocks on like fundraiser roadblocks? I don't think there's anything restrictive at this time. We could certainly...
It just seemed like there was one just about every weekend. I think originally when it was set up, it was for the poppies and the Knights of Columbus organizations.
They have to get permission. But there's no standard. It allows us to deny anyone.
Isn't there a limit to how many an organization can have?
One.
Somebody just told me there.
And it has to be not-for-profit.
I think you might want to look at defining whether the not-for-profit can be just a loose organization of parents raising money for a soccer tournament or whether you want to be a 501C.
Real not-for-profit might be more appropriate.
Yeah. 501(c)(3), (c)(4), whatever. That might be too restrictive but that would be something that I hear about as a traffic safety thing. And I, right now, anybody that kind of walks in the door, if it's not for, you know, bringing money into the grocery store as a for-profit, anything else is pretty much being allowed right now. And once a year, it doesn't really matter if the organization's structure is undefined because you organize a group of parents here and then a different group of parents here and now you can have 10 a year.
Somebody just said there was an ordinance that it was just for organizations only. Now what happens, say kids are out there doing a roadblock and they get hit, who's liable? The city liable?
Person has to be... There's a thing on there that says they have to be over 18.
Okay, what happens if an 18-year-old gets hit? Is the city liable?
I don't think we're enforcing that. There's children coming in that at these roadblocks. I would say that if we're doing as Pam says, that says, you know, you're responsible for safety and no children and da-da-da-da, you probably have some protection. But anytime anybody gets hurt, they're going to come against the city's insurance. So it's this whole policy of whether you want to be wide open and let anybody that wants to have a roadblock do it or whether you want to cause an imposition on your citizens and do it in a... The other thing is other communities where I've experienced roadblocks, there are intersections where people are stopping anyway. They're not down the middle of the street where people have to stop.
Sounds like a work session.
We call them around.
You still have a big bottle.
It's just as simple as you don't have to stop if you don't want to. As simple as somebody coming to your door, if you don't want to answer the door on whatever they're soliciting, you just don't answer it.
Yes.
It's a great way for organizations to respond.
If you do stop in the middle of the street, then that's a great issue.
What's that, stopping to give?
Well, yeah. I mean, if you want to give and I'm driving behind you and I don't and I still have to wait to be cognizant of the fact that you're stopping.
It's no different than a mailman or whoever, it just...
Honestly, I always think they're worth the cost.
I got one poppy and I just shut, I leave it in my truck and I'll show them.
Well, what if they're giving away tutsy rolls?
Tutsy rolls. I'm paying a dollar for them.
Every year, it's the same one.
There's only the three designated spots, is that correct? Sometimes they do get a little closer to the tracks I think where they set up. They probably should be closer to the bridge.
Okay, we're going to do a work session.
We can't get to that bridge.
I'm saying because of people stopping on the tracks. I don't work sessions, right? Work sessions.
I would like to be credited for the time that I didn't actually provide anything for that work session.
Which is a good idea.
And welcome.
Thank you chief. Alliance Water Resources, Chief Worsky.
Thank you board. To touch on one of the subjects that was asked earlier. Someone asked about the restaurants that were being closed. The water fountains in town that are placed throughout town, they've been, they were closed today. They were all drained and winterized.
You might want to report about the well.
Yeah. Well number, well number four, this just recently has went down. The motor burned up and when the motor burns up, it burns the bearing out of it. It drops and it cuts a groove into the pump. Happened later in the day on a Friday. We contacted Flynn Drilling, emergency pump pull. They came in on Monday, got in town around nine or 10 and the well was running by one. Had to replace the motor and the pump itself. That motor was installed and had been in use since, I think it was 99, I think I said.
What are they, steel bearings or?
I don't know.
Questions? Thank you, Steve. Committee, please. No committee reports. Consent agenda, financial report, September...
Moved to approve.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Take a reading October 10.
Moved to approve.
Says on here, October 15. We just have to scratch it off to put it to 10.
How many you know might be right?
The only correction. October 10, not 15.
Moved to approve the revised.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? Old business.
Bill number 3945, in ordinance restricting parking on the lot at Southeast Corner of State Highway 61 and Market Street in the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, second reading.
Discussion? Pam, roll call please.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig?
No.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
John Stupi, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Okufus?
With point.
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderwoman Birfield?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no. Bill number 3945 now becomes ordinance 3887.
All right. Old business, bill number 3947.
In ordinance approving change order number one in the amount of $2,000 and a final contract amount of $182,593.70 with Jokers Incorporated of St. Genevieve, Missouri for Porter Street Improvements Project.
Moved to approve, second.
Discussion?
Looks good to me. Fine job.
This is for the trigger move, we'll call on Paul Armory, probably.
Pam, roll call.
Alderwoman Birfield? Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Okufus?
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zerwig?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 3947 now becomes ordinance 3888.
No new business? Public comments? Seeing no public comments. Other business? Pam?
Request for a certificate of appropriateness from August Devoto to demolish the outbuilding located at 174 South Second.
Moved to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
Approval of a local license request from Ms. Patricia Edrington doing business at impressions, 10 South Third Street.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie? The mayor's not here.
I have a question about the parking lot. There's no intentions up down the road of leasing that property to any private individual so that they can have personal use of that, is there?
so that they can have personal use of that, is there?
I don't have any intentions, but if somebody would do that, it can't be done without your approval, so should that proposal come out, I basically told that individual that that I. At our meeting where we discussed it, I presented that possibility and this board chose not to do it, but to the rest of the party.
Tony's just happy with that and he has no intentions of leasing.
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?